Call to order, the special city commission meeting Wednesday, April 25th, 2018. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
Commissioner President Decker, there are no changes. I think Ms. Murtha would be remiss if she didn't, if I didn't remind the commission that the only thing we can talk about at special meetings is those things that are on the agenda. So it's, so that's the only item we have today.
Okay.
I'll just elaborate and just say that the agenda item is listed as city administrator resignation and transition planning. So as sort of discussed or referenced in the introduction, you are permitted to ask and discuss any issue or question that you have under that umbrella of that category. The memo is just staff's attempt to provide an outline for that discussion, but you're not limited in your discussion of issues related to this agenda item. It just has to be related.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the order of business? If not, I'd look for a motion to.
So move.
A motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The order of business is approved. Mr. Kessel, are you handling the introduction or Ms. Murtha or Mrs. Carlson?
I can, I can certainly do that. The, as, as the commission is all aware and those people who maybe haven't read the paper this morning or listening, I have submitted my resignation as the city administrator for the city of Dickinson. I have been honored to work for the community. This is, I was born in Dickinson. I have lots of family in Dickinson. This wasn't an easy decision. But I have been offered an opportunity that brings me closer to family and I have accepted that position. So we have quite a few items that we can talk about to help with the transition plan and to make sure that things go well. And I, you know, if you did read the paper this morning, you'll, you'll know that I have a great deal of confidence in the executive team and the leadership team that has been assembled here in Dickinson. And I know that you have a lot of wonderful talent and dedicated people who will continue to help the city commission continue to be a wonderful and great city. Those are, that's kind of the summary of why we're meeting this morning. So the first item that we probably should talk about would be the acceptance of the resignation and talking about the last day. I'm contractually obligated to provide you a 60-day notice. I have provided that. So that means that June 20th would be the first official day based on the 60-day notice requirement. You also are all aware that I was hoping to, through contract negotiations, change that to 30 days. And the community that I'm moving to would like me to be there a little earlier than the 60 days so that there's a transition period, or excuse me, an overlap period between the current city administrator and myself. So I'm hoping that you'll provide some flexibility with regard to that contract period and allow me to exit the community either on June 1st or June 8th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Mrs. Murtha, the acceptance of the resignation, we can approve that after, or do we need to approve that beforehand?
It would be appropriate to, to move to accept the resignation. And this has come up before. You can't, it's actually a motion where you really can't, you know, deny resignation.
Right. Okay. So the first item up is the acceptance of Mr. Kessel's resignation as city administrator. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. President, I would move to accept the resignation of Mr. Kessel.
Second it.
I don't know if your mic's on, sir. Is it on?
Oh, is it?
Oh, there, there we go.
Sorry.
Okay.
I would move to accept the resignation of Mr. Kessel.
Second it.
We have a motion to accept the resignation with a second. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor of accepting Mr. Kessel's resignation signify by stating aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have accepted your resignation, Mr. Kessel. Now the final separation of employment date. Mr. Kessel has requested that he be able to leave in 30 days. He has a contract with us to, that holds him to 60 days. Now, I am, I guess we discussed this, him and I, when we were going through contract negotiation, that he did wish to have that in his new contract. I guess I am open to suggestions from the commission or some acceptable way we could resolve this.
Mr. President, I don't have a problem with June 1.
Mr. President, I don't have a problem with the date of June 1 or June 8th for early separation. My only concern is, is that the people that will be handling the day-to-day affairs after that, whether they would need another seven days to, you know, the pretty, it's a lot of stuff to bring on in one month from now until June 1, and maybe seven days might be enough. Maybe we could hold off till about the middle of May before we make a, see how it's coming and then decide if you'd need another week or so. Would middle of May let you know be sufficient, Mr. Kessel?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I just want to clarify that based on the date that I've made the commission aware, that the June 1st or the June 8th date is over a month. It's more than 30 days' notice. You'll find that later on, we are going to make some recommendations in terms of how to appoint somebody in the interim. Unless the commission appoints somebody without a search, your transition is going to take well in excess of 90 days to go, just to go through the search, to go through the interview process and to hire, probably going to be closer to 120 days. And if you use a search firm, depending on how you would do that, it might even be longer. So I, I'm more than willing to commit to working with whomever you would appoint on an interim basis. And we wouldn't wait until, I mean, we'd start that right away, so.
I guess my suggestion would be if, if Mr. Kessel wants to depart June 1st, that we may, maybe make it in, in lieu of him possibly using some of your vacation accrue to accommodate that extra 30 days. Now, I wouldn't expect the full 30 days, but some, something that would, you know, as commissioners, that we could come to some kind of agreement that will allow you to depart June 1st.
Could you clarify for me? What, what do you mean by that?
Instead of, you know, by contract, you're obligated at 60 days' notice.
Right.
You requested 30 days. And I'm, I'm just thinking that part of those 30 days, you could just take some, use some of your vacation days and we allow you to depart on June 1st.
Okay.
Use the vacation that you have accrued. If, I mean, unless commissioners, you don't want to go that route. But I'm open to suggestions. I think you, I think we have a balance.
My comfort level right now is very low. So I would be willing to push this to the end of the meeting after we discuss some of the transition planning.
I think that's a good idea.
If I, if I just may jump in just as a, and I agree, none of these decisions have to be made today. They're just starting the discussion. And, and I can appreciate that moving this to after you discuss the interim options. But Deputy Administrator Carlson raised an issue to me at the end of the day yesterday, reminding me that when you use vacation, you also accrue vacation. That was something that she, she had pointed out to me. So as a, just throwing that as part of the discussion that you're going to have regarding the vacation at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be my preference, is that we work through the transition process and see how much more comfortable we are at the end before we make that decision personally.
Sounds good. Commissioners Altman, Trustam?
I would agree.
Yeah, that's fine with me. We can work through it.
Well, then we come to item C, which is vacation payout. Mrs. Carlson, I think you have a balance.
Yes. Thank you, President. Members of the commissioners, just let me get right back to it.
Am I correct? My understanding, it's, it's like 862 hours?
Yes, for vacation was 862. And based on his, based on his pay, he had, it's figured on the base pay and not his retirement pay. So he has about 50, Jan, did you happen to get it?
I do have it. It is a. Thank you. Approximately, approximately a little under $59,000. As of yesterday.
Right. And that would be up through the 30th of the, because the vacation accruals have been processed for the end of the month for our last paycheck. So that's up through the 30th of April.
April. So he still would accrue for May and June?
Yes. He would accrue, yes.
Unless we let him exit the end of May, then he'd only accrue for, Kessel would only accrue for May.
Correct. That would be the payout, his final check would be on May 31st, and that would include all vacation and then a quarter of the sick leave balance.
And he also has accrued sick hours, because we know Mr. Kessel's never sick. So.
And we do have that balance to.
That, yes, we do.
So, so my earlier suggestion was in lieu of some of the hours, to allow him to go, but that, but part, part of our discussions, Mr. Kessel and I, when we were discussing before this happened, his contract anyway, was a buyout of the hours. So, so we, we kind of have a running balance anyway, or at least I did. I knew what the balance was.
Do we know what the sick leave, what the sick leave balance is?
$7,717.92.
That was for the sick.
That's for sick, yes.
What was that balance?
Commissioners, that would be the payout amount, the quarter percent of the hours that he has in his sick leave bank paid out as of April 30th.
So he's still going to accrue another month in May and another month in June unless.
Correct.
We terminate him in May.
So what's the normal separation policy for anybody else if they leave? How do we pay, pay them out? If they have a bunch of accrued hours, sick and.
Is it just their final check or?
Yes. Commissioner Frederick, it would be in their final check and it would be paid out the same way. We pay out their total vacation balance plus a quarter percent of the hours that they have in their sick leave bank.
Mr. President, before the resignation letter, I think the discussion was paying, you know, half the vacation this year and half next year, I think? Is that, is that kind of such? I don't know if the resignation changes that, but if that was still something Mr. Kessel wanted, I think that would benefit both parties to, to do the two pay, one this year and one next year.
I have not spoken to Kessel about that option. I don't think that's an option or.
Yeah, I, it's not an option. Commissioner Steiner, I did suggest a, actually a three-system payout for the contract, but I've not been privy to your discussions from executive session. So I don't know what happened or what your.
But I, I don't know if that's.
Well, if it's not an option.
Something you would entertain now.
Yeah. There's not, if there's not an option, then there's no discussion here.
Right.
Let's, let's make a motion to pay the gentleman off and move on.
Well, I guess that, that would come back to if we can authorize full vacation pay, then it would come back. We, we do need to make a decision when his end date is.
I can make a motion.
Wait, well, I'm just saying, we can't wait until.
I can make a motion now if you'd like.
And if I, if I could offer, under item E, there is a discussion for a separation agreement. And I'll sort of jump in now. It's not, a separation agreement isn't required, but it's a nice way to formalize some of, you have the formal end date, you have the details regarding the vacation payout, and you can address things like, for example, ongoing issues that might come up if Mr. Kessel is currently involved as a witness in one of the litigations that is, that the city is currently involved in. And that litigation will extend beyond past his departure date. So discussing and what type of arrangements regarding compensation and travel might be appropriate in the event he's called back to North Dakota as a witness. Those are also things that you can put in a separation agreement. So that was going to be kind of the end, the end item, but I would offer that the issue of finalizing the use of vacation and the vacation payout could also be part of that if the commission wishes to go that route.
Contractually, since he had, it was 60 days' notice in the contract, what happens when, what are the ramifications of not providing the 60 days from either side?
Well, and I think from, Mr. Kessel and I have talked about this as well, that the, the contract is 60 days and he has, he has provided 60 days and will stay until the June 20th date, if the commission wants it. He's making a request to leave earlier and the commission and he can come to, you can come to an agreement to amend the contract, modify that term. But it's, it's within the commission's discretion because, as he said, he acknowledges that he, he'll stay here until, I'm not speaking for you, but he'll stay here until June 20th if you want him here until June 20th.
Which would you rather do, Mr. Kessel? Stay till June 20th or use vacation day to satisfy the 60-day portion of the contract? I don't have any problems, Commissioner Altman's using vacation time from like a June 1st or June 8th until the June 20th. I don't have any problems with that.
And, and my suggestion would be just the working days, the actual weekdays.
Right.
Yeah. So it wouldn't be the whole 20 days. So whatever the, if we look at a calendar, whatever the actual working days are.
That's traditional.
Right. So you're basically looking at 14 days.
That's, and I think, and I will turn to, you know, our HR department, but the recent city code that you passed regarding HR, there is commentary regarding the use of HR, or the use of vacation after a resignation has been provided. I just want to make the commission aware that I, I believe you'd be superseding that ordinance as it's currently sits. So just make sure that, I think we said you can't vacation out in terms of our new HR policy, our new HR ordinance. So I just want to make sure the commission is aware that of the exception you would be providing.
And I would just offer that it, though it would be contrary to the current HR ordinance that because Mr. Kessel operates under a contract and some of the contract terms are, again, not in line with what city, with what applies to other city employees, that you, I mean, you have that ability.
Right. Because the contract is outside, because the contract doesn't place limit on, example is limit on your vacation hours. Where other city employees are limited by vacation hours, you are not.
Correct.
So, I mean, your contract is outside of a kind of HR manual.
Right. In, in some regards.
Yes. So.
So to add to an option at the end, when we decide if we okay him to use vacation and for an early exit, June 1, we would save 20 days of vacation pay. We'd save whatever sick leave.
It would basically be 14 days.
Well, and I would just, I would look to Deputy City Administrator Carlson, because you would, you wouldn't save that total amount. You'd save a fraction of the amount because Mr. Kessel would continue to accrue his vacation.
Exactly.
Which, and I don't know what the result would be. If, if he used it, how much he would accrue while he.
How many hours does he accrue a month?
That, I don't have that.
I believe it's whatever the equivalent of four weeks of vacation is. I don't know.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to pull up your contract quick and have a look. But the bottom line is the best deal for the city of Dickinson as far as retaining monetary would be to let him go June 1. We don't want to pay from June 1 to June 20th. He uses vacation when it lowers our payout there. It's one way to look at it, I guess.
I believe commissioners, if I'm not mistaken, I'm taking this off the cuff, but I think it's like 6.77 or something like that, that we earn vacation per paycheck, so.
By, by Mr. Kessel's contract, he earns 25 days of leave per year. So whatever you want to, take the 25 times an eight-hour day and, so it's basically 200 hours. So divide that by 12, that's what you accrue a month.
Yeah.
So.
So you would be adding that on.
Right.
To the final paycheck, even if he does take the vacation days, or for those 20 days. So you're still adding on that accrue.
Basically 16.6 hours a month. So.
Is it, is it 16.6 hours a month?
It's a lot.
I didn't even figure. I'm sorry. So I was just going to say, if it's 16.6 hours a month, he might end up accruing more than you're taking.
Maybe I.
Maybe it is. 24. Yeah. That's what it looks like to me. It's just got to be close.
So that might actually result in a higher payout by the city. So you're taking, you're taking 15 working days, but you're paying 16 in accrue.
No, 16 hours.
16, oh, 16 hours.
Hours, not 16 days.
Okay, six days, 16 hours.
16 hours.
Then it's just two.
Yeah, 16 hours.
Okay.
We aren't all attorneys where we get 16 days off.
I don't know why attorneys get those.
So, no, it's 16 hours, not 16 days.
Okay.
So by using 14, 14 days, he would be basically using 112 hours.
Right.
So minus the 16. So, or, no. So we're back to the original discussion of.
June 1st and using vacation.
Yes. If that is, we basically have to come to, as Mrs. Murtha said, a separation agreement that we could craft. And that needs to be approved by the whole commission.
Yes.
Basically draft a separation agreement and then bring it back to you as commissioners.
No.
You.
Now, back to Mr. Frederick's concerns. My, my question would be to staff, then, how comfortable are you with Mr. Kessel leaving June 1st?
Yes, that's, that's my question.
Right.
I mean, do we know how?
I think you're right. We need to go through the rest of the.
How the handoff is going to take place.
I have, I have confidence in everyone, so.
I do, I mean, I do too. I just, I mean, what structure are we going to have? I mean, who, I mean, there's got to be some discussions on how this is going to transition.
I think you're right. We don't need to make a decision until we're done with all the discussion.
And specifically, you know, if we do appoint an interim city administrator to make sure that that discussion is had with them and what their comfort level is, I think it would be really difficult for us to make that decision without having to talk to staff and seeing where they're at. Or I would.
We can go to bullet point three and start through there and see, but.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I might go to Mr. Frederick's point of, excuse me, bullet point number three, we have discussed this as staff, and it would require filling, in the interim at least, a position that we haven't filled yet. We've created but haven't filled, and that's the Deputy City Administrator for Development. That position was created late in 2016. I guess I would offer up the, the thought that I would put my name in that hat, so to speak, for that position, if that was the wishes of the commission to go with option number three. I think, you know, we'd have to go through our, our HR procedures as it's a civil service position, the DCA for development. But I would offer that up to the commission as a, as some supporting information to option number three.
Would you like a full review of the options?
Sure.
As they're presented? The, the first one is to appoint a current city staff member as interim city administrator. There are members of the executive team who have expressed interest in that position. Ms. Carlson as deputy city administrator would be the first kind of go-to, I think, and Ms. Carlson has expressed interest in that interim appointment. There are others on the executive team who would be interested as well. The, another option would be to appoint in, somebody from outside city staff. I will tell you that John Cameron, some of you know Mr. Cameron. He is the, or was Mr. Hovind's Western representative and a city administrator in Valley City. He has expressed an interest if the commission is, desires of doing that route. The third option is the one that City Engineer Kubis just mentioned, is that you have a two deputy city administrator structure and appoint both as interim, and I won't go further on that since Engineer Kubis has, has talked about that. So those are kind of the three choices that we came up with as city staff or options for you. Obviously, the, the first two are quicker, so to speak, depending upon your transition time. And as Engineer Kubis mentioned, the third option is a good option, but it will take a little longer because of the civil service commitments that we'd have to go through. Why couldn't you do a hybrid of number three and number one, where you would appoint two people as the interim so that no one person is taking on the entire workload, their own workload? What would be the possibility of having a tag team in the meantime?
Commissioner Olton, that is exactly what we talked about in the executive as a staff. And when it was structured as two DCAs in the org chart, that is what exactly we told the civil service, myself and Mr. Kubis, that that would be a really good idea as far as being able to handle all situations. If one is, that one is gone or one is whatever, but you need that team effort.
Definitely.
It's not to say that I'm not, I, I do feel capable.
I feel capable and you too.
Of being, and being able to set, step in and tell we, if we had to do the process, but I do feel that it could be something that, if the wishes of the commissioners, that we would have two of them. I do feel comfortable working both ways.
Because we're getting ready to go into.
Because we're getting ready to go into budget season, and so you've got a lot of compiling to do that. We're going into building season, which is your, it's both of your busy times as we go into this transition, and either one of you would be competent to do this, I have no doubt in my mind about that. I just think with everything we have going on as community, as commission, as, as a team, that having the hybrid would be the most sense.
I, I think we should rule out two, personally. I don't, I don't think we need to bring somebody from the outside in.
I agree.
And get involved in the budget process and get involved in everything else, and then just to turn them loose in three months or four months and.
Right, yeah.
So, I'm completely fine with a hybrid option of, you know, Mrs. Carlson and Mr. Kubis, I am, I am completely confident in the two of them working side by side and, you know, filling the roles as city administrator. I know there's gonna be some other things that need attendance, and I think there's things that we as commissioners are gonna have to step up to the plate and do a little bit more too, to help out, so.
If I may, just, is it process-wise, an observation with regards to this discussion, if the, and so just to clarify my understanding of a hybrid of one and three, is the commission envisioning as part of this discussion, two interim city administrators? Is that the, is that the idea?
Co.
Co.
Co-administrators, co-administrators, two interim co-administrators. So, we wouldn't necessarily be filling the deputy city administrator of development position?
No.
Okay, okay. And the reason, and the reason I ask about that is be, part of the items that were provided to the commission for this meeting were the three job descriptions that were basically, and they are, I think it is fair to say that, that they should probably all be looked at as part of the process.
I was gonna make that exact suggestion as I was going through the job descriptions, but we need to go through them.
Yeah, they, they should be updated to reflect, but if, but if you, but if the, if what you're envisioning is a co-city administrator interim position, then you wouldn't necessarily have a need to address the deputy city administrator of development position because you're not officially filling that.
Right.
Position.
Yep.
I think that would be the quickest transition for us. So, if that is agreeable.
Is that something you would be comfortable with?
I'm fine with it to be Mr. Kubis.
Okay.
And then I would also just to, just again, on process, is the commission looking at deciding on a co, possibly identifying the two, or Mr. Kessel had indicated that he's aware that there might be others interested, are you aware, inside the city, are you, are you interested in having those individuals throw their hat in, so to speak, or?
I guess for me, and to not muddy the waters and to get where we need to go, I would be most comfortable in appointing these two as the interim, and then during the process of searching for the replacement, that's an opportunity for anyone else to throw their hat in the ring and let it be known that they are interested in the position as well.
Okay.
I guess, yeah. But then I guess the, the point two is, I mean, do we ask the question, is Mrs. Carlson or Mr. Kubis interested in becoming the city administrator?
You know, I don't think that's as important as.
Exactly.
Letting everything fared out, because even if they are, there are gonna be other candidates. We're gonna do a nationwide search like we do for any position, and based on qualifications, experience, someone will come to the top as far as who sticks out for the replacement. So, I don't think that's.
Okay.
Mr. President, I think that Mr. Kubis is fantastic and fully capable, but I do think that out of fairness, we should allow anyone who is willing to take that leadership responsibility to have a chance to tell us why they think that they should be chosen. I just think out of fairness, if people are willing to throw their hat in to, to take on that interim role, that they should have a chance to explain why.
And you wanna oppose that?
I'm not opposed.
You, you do have members of the executive committee who are interested in the interim position and not in being city administrator, so I appreciate Ms. Reston's comment.
Okay. Well, do we have names, or someone wanting to come forward and be part of this?
I'm not sure how you want to do that process.
Okay. That's what I mean, I mean, do you already have a list of names, or?
I certainly would provide them to the commission, and maybe before your next commission meeting in May, you can look them over and.
Is this something that we would have to speak about in an open meeting, or is it something that we could do in executive session that is?
I believe it would be appropriate, is it slightly difficult, and I apologize as I'm thinking about it, my initial response would be absolutely it's public, however, there is a, there's a new law on the books relating to applicants for public entities, and when that information becomes public, however, it, if you have three or less applicants, then it is automatically, automatically public. Yeah, so.
Would that apply to this, though? Because this is just an interim position, it's not the actual position.
Right, I mean, it's, that's, and that's, and it's appointed, and that's where I'm struggling, just thinking of, doing the analysis off the top of my head about what, what the implications are. But I think that if, if at this meeting, the commission wanted to direct that the names of internal city staff that are interested in the interim position be brought forward at the May 1st meeting next Tuesday, then we would absolutely, there is absolutely no concern if it's three or less, so we would know that prior to the meeting.
And maybe some, you know, we could just have them write a quick letter of why they, you know, their background and why they think that that position would be adequate, adequately filled by them. And that way, we would have the information and we could have that open discussion. That's my suggestion.
Have you and your HR team then had a discussion based on these options of, are we enhancing the pay if we, for the staff that are stepping up to?
I'm glad you, I, thank you for bringing that up, because that is a, that is definitely a component of this type of transition, and it has been my observation in working with different, different agencies, that upon the exit of an executive director position, if a deputy, and I've seen it a couple of times, where a deputy has assumed the role during the interim, has expressed no interest in the, in the long term, and has received an increased interim pay to reflect those additional responsibilities and duties and workload that they would be taking on. And so, that, I think, would be an appropriate, and it's all, it all comes down to budget, right? What's, where, where is the money at, how much is there, and what can be paid? But I think it's definitely an appropriate part of your discussion when you're looking at.
Well, I mean, we are going with Mr. Kessel to exit. We have budgeted for his whole salary for the year, so. So, that does free up those dollars, not.
No, that's fair, and I'm glad you asked as well, Commissioner Olton, because the past practice has been, there has been a renumeration increase. Mr. Chuck Rommel, former police chief, was the interim prior to my arrival, and he did receive a bump in pay for taking on those additional responsibilities.
Okay.
And I think that's only fair.
Right. So, back to the transition plan, I guess my understanding from the desires of the commission is to have a list generated of people interested in the interim, the co-interim city administrator positions, have them write a short letter explaining why they're a candidate for this, or it would be a, a good temporary fix for the position, and we'll have it at our first meeting in May.
Yeah.
Is that?
Agreed.
Mr. Steiner, good?
Yep. Okay.
So, do we move on to B then?
Okay, for B, the options that the staff has come up with that would like to present to the city commission are a appointment of a city administrator without a search. Bismarck did this with their current city administrator, Mr. Hunky. An appointment of a permanent city administrator by posting and advertising, this is the traditional method of going about it. If there are two traditionals, it would be number two and number three. An appointment, number three is an appointment of a permanent city administrator with the assistance of a search firm. This is how Ms. Carlson came to us, is we did use a search firm to find and acquire her. And the fourth is to consider a long-term co-city administrator structure, much like the one you're talking about on an interim basis, and, well, those are the four. Those are the four options that we came up with. I can tell you that, you know, two and three are the ones that we felt floated to the top, but it's up to you, to you as a commission, to make those decisions.
I think option four is only if we go through the search process and we just don't find anybody.
Do any municipalities in our area use the number four?
I'm not aware of any municipalities ever that have used number four.
Yeah, not like I'm saying, that's just our, that would be our last option, if we go through the whole process and there's just nobody that we can, you know, can consider, then we'd go to four, but I think the search firm that brought us, Mrs. Carlson, did a really good job. I would not be opposed to that, so. And I think that's the way we should go, I don't think we should do option one.
Right.
So, but, you know, option two, have we looked at costs of the search firm?
And I would, I would, if I may, if I may, offer my observations. In, in working with the state investment board, because they had to go through, I just wanted to relate their experience, they had to go through an executive director search twice in a very short period of time, and, and their first, their first search, they used a search firm, were very happy with the results. The candidate who came in was excellent, but ended up leaving a little after a year for family reasons. And so, they asked themselves this question, do we really want to pay another search firm, or do we want to advertise? And I think possibly part of their decision may have been driven by the fact that they had hoped that the deputy who was going to be acting as the interim wanted to apply for the, for the head position, but that individual did, did not end up applying. But they did an advertisement, and because they looked at costs and they, they said, well, the search firm costs us, we know it costs us this number of dollars, we can definitely advertise, and it's less expensive. The result, though, was disappointing for them, because while they did advertise and they received numerous, numerous applications, the vast majority of the individuals who applied were not qualified for the position. And so, they spent the time reviewing them, going through them, only to look at the, the pool that was generated and say, you know, this isn't exactly what we're looking for. And so, that's, then they started the next process, which was to go back, do an RFP for a search firm, get a search firm, and, and that, and the individual that resulted from that search is currently there today, and again, doing a wonderful job. So, just based on my prior client's experience, I would say that in, for your top position, using a search firm can really help an entity, especially governmental entity, because you have all of these open meetings, open records, things coordinating that search for you, and so, it's going to cost more than simply posting and advertising, but I think the, the result, I mean, Mr. Kessel is actually kind of an example here of, of he's moving out of state, you know, now, and so, you're, if, when you're advertising and posting, if you are really looking at a nationwide search, and you're able to cast that net as, as wide as possible, that using a firm really assists with that.
And it doesn't preclude anyone, current staff or outside of city, applying for that position, you can't.
Absolutely not, yeah.
It doesn't mean they have to go through that firm, anyone can still apply for the position, because we'll have it posted on our website and.
Absolutely, and I would say that what was really nice, and I benefited because I participated in the search for the Pers, Eddie Pers, executive director, just recently, before I transitioned it to this role, and that search firm, when they came in, were wonderful in their presentation to the board, because they came in and said, we want you to know that using us does not preclude internal review or analysis, that, that, they went to each board member and they said, we want to know who you think would work, and your recommendations, and we will take, we will explore all of those options. So, if you come to us and you say, we think this candidate is a good candidate, we will reach out to that person, internal or outside, and it was really, so all of the candidates still went through the search firm, but the search firm was making an effort to recognize that there's, there's probably wonderful local talent as well, it's not just looking outside the borders.
Right, and that goes back to my question, do we know what it costs?
Well, I, I would say that Ms. Carlson could comment on how much her search costs, and I will just tell you that the SIB and Eddie Pers experience was quite a bit more than the search firm the city used last night.
Well, I'm saying what it's gonna cost the city.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm talking about, the cost of, the cost to hire the firm, yeah.
And I will probably relate to Mr. Kessel too, because the fact is, I heard that it costs the RFP when they did the search for the national person to come in, it was around $25,000?
Yeah, in terms of a search firm, it's gonna cost you anywhere between $20 and $30,000 to hire them, plus their expenses and their marketing. So, you know, at the end of the day, you're probably looking at $30,000 to $40,000 as a rough estimate, depending upon the advertising costs and such. They do have the ability to tap in, the, the community that I'm going to, and actually most communities do use search firms, it's not 100%, some choose not to. The nice thing is, you still get to retain how much you want to be involved in the process. They will do initial interviews and call that list down and give you the top five or whatever number you choose, or you can do the first set of interviews. But their real diligence is in doing the background checks, making sure the education and work history that are listed on resumes are accurate, and then tapping into the marketing. They, they have a collection of people and methods that they can find good candidates for the city commission to consider.
And President and Commissioners, I just wanted to state that the firm that you used that when you located me, they were very personable, very personable, and people that were giving my credibility, my character, and those kind of things, people came back and said they were very personable, and they, and it just felt like they were always following through on anything, any questions that I might have had, or I was looking for, or anything like that, they followed through. And they were, as I understand, a very small firm, but very personable.
Well, we'll, we'll find out too, with the RFP, what it's actually gonna cost.
Yeah, and you have two options with regard, if you, if that's your choice to go with a search firm, is to do an RFP, or you can simply, because it's a professional service, you're not required to do an RFP, you can just simply hire a firm, and as Deputy Carlson has mentioned, if you wanted to go with that firm, you could, or, or another. I, I have kept in touch with the head of that firm, and he has stated that he'd be more than happy to assist again in a search.
Do we have a general idea what?
Cost, I don't know, I didn't ask him that, I can certainly reach out and ask him that question.
Okay, could we get some information then for the May?
Sure, absolutely, yep.
Only issue with an RFP is the time.
Yep.
By the time we draft an RFP and send it out, and get it back, and review it.
Well, we can, we can advertise, but like Mrs. Murtha says, we don't know what we're gonna get, just putting it up on the board.
Right.
Mr. President, I would say that I think a national search and hiring a firm is, is a good way to go, with the importance of this position and, and, you know, what the requirements are in the future. And also, you know, we all have full-time jobs, and our, you know, team here is quite busy, so to have people to assist us in that beginning process and weeding. busy, so to have people to assist us in that beginning process and weeding out kind of the applicants that don't qualify, I think that just makes it easier for us to, to find the applicants we're looking for.
Well, I think time is of the essence, and we have a search group that has a proven track history, and they were actually reasonably priced. And I think rather than going through the RFP, it would be nice to find out what their charges for this would be. And I think the more narrow we can make the timeframe from now to replacement, the better off we are. Money well spent.
Okay. So if we could get, if you could contact Mr. Kessel?
Absolutely, we'll do that. Yep.
So, and then we'll know if it's something that we'll consider on the May 1st.
If I, if I may also request on the May 1st, that the, the commission review the city administrator job description, because for these search firms, for them to know who they're supposed to be looking for, they want a good idea of what that person actually...
Yes, and we have been provided that.
Yes, yes.
In an email. So like I said, when I look through it, I think the weight that we have on certain, certain different duties do need to change, just because of how we've, how we have changed as a staff since Mr. Kessel came on nine years ago. And he was the sole, basically, city administrator, city auditor, city everything until we got Mrs. Carlson and other staff in place. So there was a lot of different, the weight in those positions that you had to fulfill, I think, have adjusted.
I think it was last updated 19 years ago, so I think it's fair.
I thought maybe it got adjusted when Mr. Kessel came aboard, so...
I can't say if it got adjusted prior to my arrival.
Oh, okay. Well, 19 years ago, wow.
Mr. President, so it looks like you're leaning towards, you know, option number three there. And I'm just going to throw my hat in the ring for...
You're hired. Oh, I thought you were throwing your hat in the ring.
Yeah. No, no, I'm not. I'm going to throw my opinion. Actually, number two is leaning more my way, and I'm leaning that way, for some simple reasons. UND has been taking heat for going out and spending a ton of money for someone that, you know, been there a year, two years and not looking for a way out. NDSU the same way. The school district here just got some heat for spending a ton of money to go outside also. I, at this time, I don't know if we need to go out and spend a lot of money. I personally think that, you know, we should test the waters here locally. I think we might have some pretty good candidates here in the community or within maybe 100 or 200 miles of the community. I, you know, I, I'd like to test those waters first without spending 20, 25, $30,000.
Well, we'll have a, we'll have a cost. Mr. Kessel will have a cost for us by May 1st, and we should be able to make a decision.
Yeah.
And then we can have a, a motion and a resolution, what we want to do that night. If we're going to just stay locally, Mr. Steiner's number two option, or if we go out and do an RFP, which, you know, we'll take a vote as commissioners and we'll decide. I, I understand the cost, Mr. Steiner. There are people taking heat all over for cost, and we have to take that consideration too, so. We covered everything. If, Commissioners, if you want to go through just the agenda real quick...
I think there is number five as well, I'm sorry, under sub three.
Well, is there a number five?
Interview structure.
Oh, discuss, okay, interview structure and use of transition committee, so, okay. Mrs. Murtha?
If I, if I may offer, and this is just again for discussion and maybe formalization in May, but the, the way, the way I have seen this structured in the past, and I think especially in a position where you're, this is your, your city administrator, is your direct report to the commission. The commission is, is hiring this individual, and it's a contractual arrangement, and it is very much different than, than all of the other city positions. It is very important for you to, all of you, to have that interview experience with your applicant, that it, that it not be a collaboration of outside, but that you have that experience. So I, the way I have seen this structured in the past, again, this was using a search firm, but the collaboration between the entity and the search firm has been that there was a, a subcommittee that was appointed to deal with minor transition issues. For example, finalization of the RFP, what's the scope of the salary, what type of terms are we looking at? They can meet and make decisions more quickly than maybe a full gathering of the board. You meet twice a month, so that's very nice. The entities I've worked with before only met once a month, so that was part of the need for the, the transition subcommittee. But also, what would happen, the search firms would get all of the applicants, narrow them down. Sometimes they would bring them to the transition subcommittee, not for interviews, but for review of resumes, sort of finalizing, how large a group are we going to bring for interviews before the full, the full body? And then set up interviews with the candidates, either initial and final, I've seen it both, or just one final. But usually it's been at least two, where you interview a larger group and then you narrow that down to a smaller group, maybe, maybe two, possibly three candidates at the, for the final interview. And those interviews take place with the entire board, and then you're making a motion and a decision.
Now with the new law, North Dakota law, when we have the final interview with the full board, does that allow, I guess, in a public setting, or is it executives?
It is a good, and it's a good question. It's sort of quasi, because it is in the final, in the, when, if you have initial interview, for example, six candidates, all of that can be confidential, the names of them, the, you know, the identity of the individuals. When you have narrowed it down to your final candidates at that final meeting, they can be sequestered from each other. They can't sit in on each other's interview. However, the public and the press can sit in on those final interviews and that, so they can watch as it goes, it goes through. So it, it does behoove you to make a decision that day after you have the final interviews of motioning who the, who you would offer the position to, because it's going to be, they're not going to be aware, but everyone else is. So it's, it's nice to, it's nice to have at that time. So it is a bit of a timing component, but up until that point, it is now confidential.
So we need to discuss the transition committee members and...
If you wish to have one, yes.
Yes. And I think we should have a transition committee before, to, to work with the, if we do go the RFP route and the search firm, to work with them and, and whittle it down from however many candidates we have to possibly the final six or five, five or six. And so I guess, looking at that, I, I'm willing to be on the, on the committee. I do have the free time to do...
I do too.
So, and then generally, staff-wise, how many staff members? I guess it would be staff members not looking to apply for the position.
I, I would be, I would be happy to assist as your legal counsel, if you would.
On the trans, on the committee?
Yes. Not as a committee member, but as a...
Right, as legal counsel, yeah.
And then Mrs. Nominate, would you be willing?
As HR rep, okay.
Mr. President, I would be willing to throw my hat in, but I will allow the commission members and seniority to have the opportunity to volunteer.
I think having two members, you and Scott, would be in my mind. What do you think, Carson?
Well, I think it's, it's time to address the elephant in the room. And that would be Mr. Kessel's resignation letter, where he mentions that President Decker, you wish to have turnover at this position every three years. I, I struggle with that. I struggle with trying to bring in a city administrator on a three-year term.
Well, I'll ask you this, Mr. Steiner, and I, and I'm, we're not going to get into it here, but I would ask you to go through the minutes and find those exact terms.
Well, I've heard it before too. I think we've all heard it.
Three years. You've heard three years.
I think we've all heard it in certain meetings.
You've heard, Mr. Steiner, you heard me say three years.
I think it's, well, three years.
That's what he has stated. You've heard me say three years.
You said you'd like to see turnover every three years.
Yeah.
It's, it's been recorded in certain meetings. So my concern is, is that the board's wishes every three years? Because if we're going to go out and look for a city administrator to come in and remove themselves from the community they're in, they're a young couple and they have kids and so on, and tell them to come in for three years and leave, I, I can't support that. So I guess my question is, are you still under that?
Well, first off, I would like you to find those minimums, that I say three years.
I can tell you where to go and listen for it.
Okay.
If I could also offer just now that it would be appropriate, the discussion about the length of contract and, and turnover, those are appropriate discussions to be had by the board, or by the commission, absolutely. But with regards to the long-term position, I don't know that, I don't know that you have to have them for the interim discussion, but as you work with either a search firm or an advertising, as you're interviewing applicants, I think it would be important to convey a sense of, of what the longevity of the position is.
Well, my concern is the type of participants that we're going to get if, if, I mean, obviously they're going to ask what the city of Dickerson is like, and you probably contact Mr. Kessel, and why'd you leave and so on, and it's in his resignation letter, and that's a concern that I have. I mean, if you're looking at a turnover every three years, I mean, that's, that's a concern that's going to be out there, that I don't know what kind of response we're going to get.
Mr. Steiner, I know what I have stated. I have stated, and I will make this very public, that there should be term limits, that people can be in positions too long. I've stated that very publicly. And I have said that eight to 10 years is long enough.
I don't think you've stated that.
But I...
So the bottom line is, you're, you're still looking at, you think the city administrator should be a term limit, and that, I, I have a problem with that, I just do.
Well, and that's your personal opinion.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm, well, you know, I'm, I'm entitled to my opinions too.
And that's why, absolutely.
So...
But I disagree with the term limit on that.
Well, that's fine. You want to be on the committee?
Well, I would ask that you step down from that committee.
Well, I will not with that. I will not.
And I would say that Vice President Holtman's and Sarah be the lead committee on this.
I'm okay with Scott and Sarah doing it.
Jason?
I mean, I, I've never heard the three years, so, and I've been on here just a little over a year or so, but if it was said, I, I don't recall that, but I'm fine with Scott being on there. I mean, just for the fact that in two months Clayton and I might not be here, so...
Exactly.
We're up for reelection, so...
And I would just also offer, transition committees won't, don't make, don't make final decisions.
Exactly.
With regards to candidates.
Yep.
So, I, I mean, if Mr. Curse, Mr. Steiner would, wants to step up, I, I don't have an issue with that either, so, just to be clear on that one. I just think me and Clayton would be put into a different situation, one of us and both of us didn't get reelected, so.
Yep.
So we'll work through the, the setup of the transition committee, also present that on May 1st?
Yes.
Okay. And then the interview structure, you'll also work through that?
Yes. And, and Mr. Kessel also wanted me to clarify for you that, just as a side note, for the final interviews, though candidates can be sequestered from each other, you don't have to sequester them.
Right. Okay, yes. I think, I think they did that for the school board.
Most likely. You'll want an open house, you'll, you'll want to include them in, in settings where they'll be together.
And, you know, just for the record, Mr. President, I would like to add that I think we should make this very public, allow the public to participate as much as possible, meet the candidates. I think that's very important, that they have an opportunity to meet candidates and provide feedback before decisions are made. I think that's very important, especially to the role of city administrator.
I appreciate those comments. I agree with that. So, do we have anything else, Mr. Kessel, Mrs. Murtha, cover?
Just direct the commission back now that you've had all this discussion on the June 1st or June 8th. Do you have an opinion on one or the other? I'm more than willing to take vacation to get to which either date?
I'm, I'm fine. Personally, I'm fine with June 1st.
June 1st.
I'm comfortable, it sounds like we have a group of candidates willing to step in, so I don't have any issue.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just a point of clarification, was that June 1st and, and then just a vacation payout, not June 1st and then a use of vacation after June 1st, right?
Use of vacation after, for just the workdays, yes.
Just the workdays, yeah.
So what, with regards to, there's a couple, one other item, it's a very small item in the grand scheme of things, but Mr. Kessel is planning on attending some, or had, had been registered to attend, I should say, some conferences and seminars in the month of, in the month of May. And so just a, and again, usually after somebody resigns, there, it's a city value issue, but I, I think there's some not, there's some items that are non-refundable, it may be appropriate still for attendance, and, and I would just turn, turn to you to talk about them.
There's three things that come up. The first is the statewide housing conference, it actually starts today in Bismarck and ends tomorrow. The next is the Williston Basin Petroleum Council, or Conference, it's also in Bismarck. I believe Commission President Decker and I are registered to, to attend that. That one I'm not so concerned about, because I think we can, either my, my attendance, I hope, continue to, to go, or we can reassign. Engineer Kubis has attended these in the past, and certainly if, if that's the, the commission's desires, if it works into Engineer Kubis' schedule, I would certainly be fine with that. The, the next one, and probably the most prominent one though, is the GFOA conference I had mentioned previously to the commission, that I'd like to attend that. Those arrangements have been made. That is in about a week. The airline ticket is non-refundable. We can probably get a part of, well, we can get the hotel if, if the commission chooses. We could get that back and not, not expend those costs. And we may, and I emphasize may, be able to get some of the registration fee back. I doubt we'll get it all, but we might be able to get part if that's the commission's desires. So that's really the biggest question in my mind, is GFOA attendance, because it, it is a few days, it will be, I think, three or four days, being away and an investment. And you'd get part of that investment back, but certainly not all of it.
Are those business days?
Yes. Yeah, I...
Mr. Kessel, it's May 5th through May 9th, so you leave, your, your flight was leaving on a Saturday, and then you'd be returning on a Wednesday.
Okay, so it does include a part of a weekend then, I guess?
It was the cheaper way, way to go.
Yeah.
So, but the total cost of the flight was 943, and we can get like a quarter percent, I did call, and we can get a quarter percent of a credit on that flight, because it's so close to the actual departure date. As far as the GFOA registration, when I called to see what they do, their policy is no refund now. We're in that period of, they're expecting somebody to attend, and...
And how much was that?
I, honestly, I can't remember.
I think it was six.
600.
600, yeah.
Is that assignable? Did you ask that question? Should somebody else attend? I mean, I'm not sure if the commission wants to experience another $1,000 flight, but...
That I did not ask, because it's all registered in your name and your identification on the ticket.
Biggest conflict is commissioners would go, that Monday is the Board of Equalization. I don't think it would be good if any of us were not there, Board of Equalization. So. Just eat this one or try to get wet weekend back, or let Mr. Kessel attend?
It's three days out of the office, that's the only issue, but...
The only conflict with that is, is the... The only conflict with that is, is the Board of Equalization, that Monday night, so.
I don't want your involvement in that meeting as much anyway.
What is the GFoa?
That's more, that's more our involvement, I think, than anything, but...
What is the GFoa?
It stands for Government Finance Officers Association, I attended about three years ago, and this is when Questica, this is when we purchased Questica and moved forward with that as our budget software, it's an excellent conference when it comes to budgeting and financial matters.
Commissioner, just to let you know, I've also attended GFoa from my other past employment, and that is a great conference, you do get a lot of the software partners and, and the networking and things like that, that really do come out of that, it's just that this year, I'm not able to go due to another appointment, so I wouldn't be able to, other than that, I would have probably tried to jump in and, and change it as quickly as we knew, but I can't on that portion of it, so maybe next year or whatever, but, you know, I, I just feel it is a good conference, I, you know, it, it, it does have benefits, it does, you know, have a lot of benefits and stuff on that portion of it, but we're looking at probably, I was thinking about, I didn't add it all up yesterday, I was quickly trying to do it, but it's about $1,800 that we'd probably be eating if he didn't go, so, so you know that.
That's with the partial refund?
No, yes, I could probably, we're going to get very little, very little, and...
I'm, I'm not opposed to let Mr. Kessel go.
Me either.
So.
It's already bought and paid for.
In the books.
Yeah, it's paid for, so.
Yep.
Bring something back good.
I will.
And with that, I believe that concludes many of the discussion items, so at the next, at the May 1st meeting, we will provide a list of names of individual, and letters from individuals interested in a co-interim city administrator position, we will also provide costs related to both advertising and an RFP firm, and the job description will also be on the agenda for discussion.
Did you say search firm?
Yes, yep.
Okay, yep, and then the transition committee?
The transition committee establishment, and possibly, if I'm really on top of things, a draft of a separation agreement.
Okay.
You're always on top.
But it might be to the next May meeting, yeah.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Well, do we need to make a motion on his payout then? We never did that.
I think that'll come with the separation agreement.
Okay, all right.
Just for clarification, are we, just so I'm on the same page as everyone else, are we saying that Linda is one of them, and then we're opening up a second position, or are we allowing two people to apply, or two positions to, for people to apply for, for their interim? We should clarify that, that's a fair clarification.
You know, I, I thought about that a little bit, and, you know, we, we thought that just initially, we would appoint two people as the interim, well, we have three people, and they're each from different departments, and we, so I think we'll know a lot more at the May 1st meeting when we get the names in front of us, and it, it may be a hybrid of a hybrid, where we appoint three people as interim, just so that, I don't know, but so, I would say we can wait until the May 1st meeting to see who comes forward and...
So does Linda need to submit a letter then, or are we agreeing with issues?
I guess, yeah, that would be the question, is whether or not Mrs. Carlson will be submitting a, submitting a letter with the other candidate.
I already feel she's in a deputy position, you know, so...
I agree, we're just doing the clarification.
Yeah, she's in a deputy position, so I, I would say that it's one other.
I would agree.
One plus.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's why we have her there, so, so. Anything else, Commissioners? Anything else, staff, that we need clarification on?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I look for a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second.
We adjourn.